To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Mr. Lawrence.
Ms. Shinnefell?
Here.
Mr. Cozer?
Here.
Mr. Curry?
Here.
Dr. Poroska?
Here.
Mr. Sider?
Here.
Mr. Lewis?
Here.
First item on the agenda, special report swearing in of new police officer. Chief Lawrence.
Thank you. So this is only going to take an hour, hour and a half.
Speak faster.
I just want to thank Peterstownship Council, Mr. Lauer, for allowing us the time and opportunity to conduct our ceremony. I'd also like to thank Magisterial District Judge Meligrane for taking the time to administer the oaths of office. We have one officer who will be sworn in and we'll be promoting three officers, one corporal, one sergeant, and one captain. Before we begin, I'd like to thank members of the Peterstownship Police Department for their hard work, dedication, and enthusiasm. I believe that this department is one of the best departments in Western Pennsylvania, and the officers we have here tonight are examples of that. These officers are good leaders who know that it is more important to do what is right and not worry about who is right. They lead by example, and they have and display their integrity every day. I want to congratulate all of you on your accomplishments. All right, so we'll get down to business. Our first item of business is the swearing in of Officer Robert Smolinski. Officer Robert Smolinski currently resides with his wife Amy and daughter Taylor, who's 15, in South Park. Officer Smolinski began his career in law enforcement with the Pittsburgh Police Department in 2001, where he achieved the rank of detective. Officer Smolinski retired from the city of Pittsburgh in July 2024 after 23 years of service. Officer Smolinski started his career with Peterstownship on July 8th, 2024. I'd like to say this about Bob, he is an excellent officer, and he comes to us with a wealth of experience. I've noticed that younger officers are already going to him for advice on investigations and how to handle things. He has a great attitude, his interactions with the public are fantastic. We're lucky to have him, and we look forward to having him have a long second career with the Peterstownship Police Department. Bob, you can please come up. Judge?
Thank you, Chief. Please raise your right hand. Repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Robert Smolinski.
Do solemnly swear that.
Do solemnly swear that.
I will support, obey, and defend.
I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And I will discharge my, discharge the duties.
And I will discharge the duties.
Of my office with fidelity.
Of my office with fidelity.
I will bear true faith.
I will bear true faith.
And allegiance to the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
And allegiance to the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
Its citizens and their elected representatives.
Its citizens and their elected representatives.
I will perform all my duties.
I will perform all my duties.
As an officer, honestly.
As an officer, honestly.
Faithfully.
Faithfully.
And in accordance with the law.
And in accordance with the law.
And I will obey the orders of my superior officers.
And I will obey the orders of my superior officers.
Conduct myself at all times.
Conduct myself at all times.
In accordance with the regulations set forth.
In accordance with the regulations set forth.
By the Peterstownship Chief of Police.
By the Peterstownship Chief of Police.
Congratulations.
Thank you, sir.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Judge.
You're welcome. All right, our second item of business is the promotion of three supervisors. I'll introduce each officer, say a few words, and give them their badge. Upon conclusion of all three presentations, Judge Meligrane will administer all the oaths of office at the same time. First is Corporal Zach Beatty. Corporal Zach, our Beatty currently resides in Whitehall with his wife Rachel. Corporal Beatty attended Slippery Rock University, where he received a bachelor's degree in criminal justice and a master's degree in criminal justice administration. Corporal Beatty began his career in law enforcement with the Pittsburgh Bureau of Police in 2016, where he worked in various positions to include Zone 2 Patrol and the Special Victims Unit, where he attained the rank of detective. Corporal Beatty worked with the Pittsburgh Bureau of Police until April 2023, when he accepted a full-time position with the Peterstownship Police Department. Corporal Beatty was officially promoted to corporal on August 18th, 2024. Zach brings a great attitude to the police, police department here. He has a wealth of experience, especially with special victims. He was still on coach, and he was helping some of our senior officers handle an investigation of that type. It was very nice to see, and he brings a lot to the table here. Zach, if you could come up and receive your badge. No, you get down. Our second promotion is John Bruce. Sergeant John Bruce resides in Midway, Pennsylvania. Sergeant Bruce attended the University of Pittsburgh at Greensburg and graduated, graduated with a bachelor's degree in administration of justice in 1998. Sergeant Bruce then attended the Act 120 Municipal Police Academy at Indiana University of Pennsylvania and was part of the spring graduating class in 1999. Sergeant Bruce began his career with the Kaneboro Police Department in 2000. He was then hired by the Peterstownship Police Department in August of 2000. Sergeant Bruce was promoted to the rank of corporal in 2018, and on August 18th of 2024, Corporal Bruce was promoted to the rank of sergeant. I know John doesn't remember this, but in 2008, I was a victim of theft here in Peterstownship, and John was my investigating officer. I was impressed with him, I thought he did a great job, and he was a good introduction for me to meet guys from the department that I didn't already know. I'll also say this, John knows the streets of this township better than any living human. He can tell you everything about every street everywhere. I'd also like to thank, your parents are here, right? If you could, thank you, thanks for coming, we appreciate it. John always makes good decisions, and I have the utmost confidence in, in him and how he runs his shift. John, would you please come up? Congratulations. Thank you. All right, our third promotion is Captain Judd Emery. Captain Emery currently resides with his wife Amy in Peterstownship. Captain Emery has three children, Connor, 20, Lanning, 15, and Jake, 10, who is also here with us tonight. Captain Emery began his career in law enforcement with the Pittsburgh Police Department in 2001, where he achieved the rank of detective and worked in various positions to include Zone 3 Patrol, Narcotics, and Homicide. Captain Emery worked there until March of 2018, when he accepted a full-time position with Peterstownship Police. He was promoted to corporal in September of 2019 and sergeant in August of 2022. Captain Emery was officially promoted to his current position on July 10th, 2024. Captain Emery is the administrative captain. His job entails a lot of detail. I know a lot of it can probably be boring, but he does a really great job. He oversees our accreditation. He's excellent at it, he's a, a details guy. He's what I like to call my utility infielder. Anything that, that is, needs done, he can, he can take care of it, whether it's a project, computers in the cars, radios, everything, anything we ask him to do, he jumps in with both feet and is absolutely fantastic at it. I can say this honestly, though, but without Judd, we would not be the police department that we are, and I truly believe that. So at this time, as a tradition that is normal for promoting officers, I'd like to have Captain Emery come up with his wife, and Jake, if you want to come up. Amy's going to pin Captain's bars on his collar. All right, actually, your mother will stay up here. Corporal Beatty, Sergeant Bruce, if you could join Captain Emery for the oath of office. Judge?
Thank you, Paul. You can all raise your right hand, please. Repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Judd Emery.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
I will support, obey, and defend.
Support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And I will discharge.
And I will discharge.
The duties of my office with fidelity.
The duties of my office with fidelity.
And I will bear true faith.
I will bear true faith.
And allegiance.
And allegiance.
To the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
To the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
Its citizens.
Its citizens.
And their elected representatives.
And their elected representatives.
I will perform all my duties.
I will perform all my duties.
As an officer, honestly.
As an officer, honestly.
Faithfully.
Faithfully.
And in accordance with the law.
And in accordance with the law.
And I will obey the orders.
And I will obey the orders.
Of my superior officers.
Of my superior officers.
Conduct myself at all times.
Conduct myself at all times.
In accordance with the regulations.
In accordance with the regulations.
Set forth by the Peterstownship Chief of Police.
Set forth by the Peterstownship Chief of Police.
I didn't prepare anything, but this is what I got to tell you. I practiced law all over the state, and I've seen departments, whether local, state, federal, whatever it might be, and I'm a resident of this community often. I just got to tell you how fortunate we are in this community to have a police department with the professionalism that this department has. Now, in all seriousness, we may not see eye to eye on everything, but that's all. But I can tell you there's a mutual respect between us, and I truly feel fortunate to live in a community with this group. Thanks, guys.
All right, this concludes our certain ceremony. I just want to express my thanks to the council again for allowing us the time and to Mr. Lauer for allowing us to be here tonight. Thank you, have a great evening.
Thank you, Chief.
Before you guys run out, thank you, Judge Meligrane, for coming, and I just want to mention too, last Friday, there was a possible threat at the high school football game. It really wasn't a threat, yet four or five more officers showed up with chief, so I just want to again extend what Judge was saying is, we all feel extremely fortunate to have you on our community, so thank you again, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Okay, moving on to approval, the minutes Peterstownship Council meeting held on August 26, 2024.
Seven seconds.
Motion of second, all in favor.
Aye.
Seven, nothing, Mr. Lauer. Audience comments, only the five minutes, non-agenda items. Look, we don't have much of an audience. Thank you for coming. No unfinished business, new business, change order number one to contract with Raffle Construction Inc. for the Peterswood Park Field 1 and 2 improvements.
So on May 28th, PeterTownship Council ordered a contract to Raffle Construction an amount of $1,610,850 for improvement of the Peterswood Parks Field 1 and 2. Those improvements included new dugouts and a press box. While excavating footers, the contractor exposed soft soils that lacked the bearing capacity for the press box and dugouts on Field 1 and the dugouts on Field 2 on the third base side. To remediate this condition, Raffle was directed by Gateway's Geotechnical Engineer to overexcavate and install stone in the footer bottom. In addition to that, when the, when the press box on Field 1 was laid out, it necessitated several steps being installed in the footer, and Raffle's not charging for that change in the footer, but it resulted in the need for additional masonry work, so there's a change in that regard as well. The total change order is $16,017.73, which is approximately 1% of the contract. It's my recommendation that council authorize change order 1 to the contract with Raffle Construction.
So moved.
I'll sign it.
Motion of second, all in favor.
Aye.
Oppose.
Just for the record, Paul, we, we got some kind of grant towards this.
Yes.
There's millions, whatever the, one million states, what is it like?
Seven, nothing, Mr. Lauer. No, that's fine. Next item, resolution establishing retirement health savings account.
So the labor contract with the Peterstownship Firefighters requires the township to establish a retirement health savings account program. Retirement saving health accounts are designed to assist employees with the cost of post-retirement healthcare expenses, which is facilitated through the contributions into an employee's health savings account. These accounts are unique in that the contributions are tax-free and their withdrawals are tax-free as well. In the case of Peterstownship, these accounts can be designed in lots of different ways. In the case of Peterstownship, the retirement savings account will principally be funded by employee contribution. Each firefighter will contribute 1% of their wages into the account, and then at the time of the retirement, firefighters will be required to contribute a significant portion of their sick leave payout into the account as well. The township's contribution is limited to payments and recognition of sick leave lost beyond the allowable maximum approval. Part of the thought is this, that this is an encouragement not to abuse sick leave. Aiken has identified three viable options for the township. The one that is in front of you tonight for action is from the National Public Pension Fund Association. It's Tracy's recommendation that we enter into this agreement based upon the, the fee structure, the investment offerings, and the abilities of employees to manage their own investments. We've reviewed this recommendation with the firefighters, they're on board with this recommendation. Tracy's here to answer any questions you might have, but it's my recommendation that council adopt ordinance 91, excuse me, resolution 9124, authorizing the creation of a retirement health savings account program.
So moved.
Second. Is it 91 or 92? It says 92 in your notes.
It's 91 on the.
It'd be 91.
Okay, I have a motion of second, any discussion? Tracy, is there anything you want to add? All right, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose. Seven, nothing, Mr. Lauer. Next item, resolution amending job description contained in Peterstownship personnel being.
So Kristen Hoole has served as a code enforcement officer for Peterstownship since July 2018, and she's recently accepted a position of zoning, of planning and zoning officer in South Strabane. This is going to be a difficult position to fill, you know, during her tenure, Ms. Hoole has handled a lot of difficult cases and always done it in a way that's courteous and professional, and she's going to be truly missed and difficult to replace. We reviewed the job description for this position, and we're recommending that there be two changes, and that's what's in front of council tonight. One, the, the position as it's currently, the job description currently describes, shows the code enforcement officer secondary role being in support of the planning department staff. What we'd like to do is change that so that the secondary role is focused on supporting the building inspection staff. You know, in our recent experience, it's shown us how difficult it is to find certified building inspectors. Our thinking is that if we bring somebody in and allow them to work with the building inspector to get the needed certifications, we create not only the ability to have someone go in and do building inspections when our current building inspectors may be on leave or on vacation, and in the long run, if in fact we lose a building inspector, this may be a, a good way to transfer someone into that position. The, the second thing is that we're suggesting that we should revise the pay grade. This, this job is currently graded at a nine, which translates into a midpoint of 59, 879. We're proposing that it be changed to an eight, where the midpoint is $64,000. So with, with the, the other change that's contained in this resolution, the official title of our building inspectors is building inspector, code enforcement officer. They don't do code enforcement, and for the most part, so what we're suggesting is that they be changed to building inspector, and then in that description, as a secondary or a non-essential function, is to do code enforcement. So it's my recommendation, PeterTownship Council approved a resolution 9224, amending the job description contained in the PeterTownship personnel being.
So moved.
Second.
Motion of second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose. Seven, nothing, Mr. Lauer. Next item, authorization to demolish condemned structure.
So the township has sent a letter to William, Indiana Edwards, indicating that the home at 225 Center Church Road is not suitable for habitation. All utilities on the property have been shut off for an extended period of time. The roof is compromised, and the first floor ceilings in some rooms has collapsed. I had a chance today to actually go into the house and take some pictures. There is nothing that can be done to, to make that house livable. It's, the situation is relatively desperate. Mr. Ellis, who is a nephew of Mr. Edwards, was there, he concurs with, with, with my opinion. Mr. Ellis is, today was to travel to Washington County Court to begin the process of opening up the estate of the grandparents, who currently are listed as the owners of this property, with the intention of being able to act on behalf of Mr. Edwards' interest and eventually sell that property. Like I say, he's in concurrence with tearing it down being the only, only option, and I propose that the Peterstownship Council authorize the manager to proceed with the demolition of the house. Mr. Bardini, who's assisted us on similar projects, estimate the cost of demolition to be in the vicinity of $12,000. If we proceed, the township will lean the property to secure future payment, and it, like I say, it's my, going to be my recommendation that, that council authorize the manager to demolish the house.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion?
The only question I have is this, this is contiguous to the other property that we tore down?
Yes.
Are they titled separately?
They, they are owned, the, the ownership is the same, but they're two separate lots.
So is our effort to overcome the legal obstacles to be able to dispense this for both of those properties, or are you just talking about this one at this point in time?
Well, Mr. Ellis is, is attempting to open a state for the grandparents, which, and the assets of that estate for both, in both cases will be those lots. So he's attempting, what he has explained to me is what the family wants to do is sell those lots off, pay the liens and outstanding taxes, and then that money be available to Mr. Edwards for his own benefit, so that.
I just didn't want to have to do this all again for this other property. Okay.
Thanks for the question. All right, motion of second, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose. Seven, nothing, Mr. Lauer. Payroll bills.
Yes, prior to this evening's meeting, I reviewed the payroll and bills, find they're going to be in good order, and you should approve them.
I'll second that, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose. Seven, nothing. Anything we need to do with the correspondence?
Just want to point out to you, there's a letter from EMC Insurance, this is the insurance for the Peters Creek Sanitary Authority. They believe they have no liability associated with the, the image that occurred to Station 3, but that being said, they are providing the township a check for $15,000 to offset some of the costs.
Thank you. Then available would be the minutes for the board meetings. Moving to miscellaneous, any report from zoning hearing board?
Yeah, I think we need to talk about these. So there were two decisions the zoning hearing board made that I think town, the council needs to be aware of. The first involves Mr. Corcher's property, which is located off of Old Oak Road, and Mr. Corcher had been in for two other variances, and council opposed those, and I think correctly the zoning hearing board agreed with council's recommendation. But in this particular case, the, there is a requirement in our zoning ordinance that it's designed to pull buildings towards the road, so you have to have, that building needs to be located within 45 feet of the road. So that red line that is across there is 45 feet. What Mr. Corcher asked is for a variance to allow him an additional 45 feet, so that it in fact would be 90 feet off the road. That was denied, and the problem is, that blue line, that blue line represents the floodplain. So what the zoning hear, hearing board's decision says is that Mr. Corcher has to build this building inside the floodplain, and that's just not permitted. And so if there ever was a case where a variance should be given because of the nature of the topography and the, and the physical features of a property, this is one where it should have been given.
Now, the other issue on this property, though, every time they came in, is they didn't want to connect up to the other shopping center, right, where the Chipotle is?
And we haven't seen a site plan yet, and I think you're not going to see a site plan, because without this, this variance, I think it's going to be hard, but they have conceded the fact that they're going to make that connection, or at least bring the.
Build right up to.
To it, yeah.
And did the zoning board understand that their decision would require him to put the building in the floodplain?
What you're looking at is a slide that was provided them at the meeting.
Did they comprehend it? I don't know that we can answer that question. Did anybody ask, yeah, what does the purple line mean?
Well, that purple, I take it back. The floodplain is shown, the, the illustrated purple line is me, so that it could be visible tonight, but this is out of the presentation that was done in front of the, the zoning hearing board. I was not at that meeting, but what was explained to me is, there was work that Mr. Corcher did on the right-hand side of this road. If you go down there, he has cleared the hillside with the permission of the property owner. He's created a stone lay-down area, and quite honestly, I, I think he should have been in here for a permit for that, and I think they were, and there were residents present objecting, and I think they were so taken that he did not get a permit for this, that their solution was, we won't give you this variance. I don't think one has anything to do with the other, and I don't know whether he's appealed to the court yet or not.
I don't believe he's appealed, although he suggested that he would. And I think this one's slightly different, you know, my, of course, my snap reaction is to make a motion and we appeal it, but this is somewhat different than the other ones, because the other ones you're talking about, they were all side yard setbacks, and that, you know, this is more on the property owner. I think he wins if he appeals, but I don't think that this is necessarily one we should be taking the lean on.
And I guess, and I would agree with you, but my question is, if he in fact appeals, should the township join the lawsuit?
Oh, I would say absolutely. I just don't think we should be driving by.
I, I would agree with you. Is that, is that the position of council, though?
We'll probably have time to come back before you, if they appeal, for you to weigh in, see what their reasons are.
The, the other one is one that council actually took a position on, and, and your position was relayed to, to the zoning hearing board, that you unanimously took the position to deny the, the, so what this is, is a request to be able to cover, to put a covered patio at that location, which is in violation of the setbacks there. One of the things that you have is that the, the adjacent property owner got a hold of us the day he happens to be deployed in Germany right now, and his family was visiting him, and so therefore not available to come to the, to the zoning hearing board, and was surprised that in fact they, they authorized this variance. I think he's the neighbor that's immediately above.
I believe so, yes.
So like 233?
Yes, and so.
That would be the neighbor who we went to, we went to look at their fence this year, right? Was that the end of last year? Was that the end of last year? We went to look at their fence, that there was some holes in their fence? Yes, that is the neighbor.
And, so the neighbor is asking council to appeal the decision.
Hey Paul, can you come back to the picture before this? No, not that one.
Sure.
Yeah, can you, can you pull it out? I'd like to pay a look at it. It looks to me, it seems to me like, isn't part of that dwelling already in violate, isn't it?
There was a red line earlier, the dotted red line.
Yeah, wasn't there a red line or something?
Yeah, at least I get to that.
The portion of that property was non-conforming. How did that occur, and when did it occur, do you know?
Oh, I don't know. This house has been there for...
Probably for the, probably house was built.
What is that dotted red line?
I think that's the rear set.
So technically, that patio may, should maybe, in that corner of the house, should not have been there? Is that what that's saying?
Probably should have been expansive and non-conforming use, instead of a variance.
At the time when this house was built, and what we've seen with other site plans from this era, is that they only lay out a building setback line in the front. They don't bother in the rear or the side, whether one exists or not. The ordinance at the time, I'm not sure. But if you look at old, old site plans, you will see that there is no rear or side setback. And that may be why it is laid out the way it is as we see it today.
Of course, the neighbor can't appeal because they didn't show up at the hearing, so they're not in a great party.
Yeah, I understand. And if it was a non-conforming structure, you certainly are increasing the degree of non-conformity.
Yes. Well, now, wait a second. Where they want to build the roof, is that part of the patio? Is there a patio there already?
I think where they wanted to do it is where that brown area is.
Is there a patio underneath?
Can you go back to the, go back to the regular?
I'm the property, and I can speak to that.
Sure. State your name.
Alexis On Dash, 1035 Elizabeth Drive. We came for this variance on the 21st of September, so our house is already non-conforming, so I think it's 29 feet from the rear setback, so this is where this line is. This is all concrete, just a slab of concrete patio. This brown area is where our deck is going. We have an approved deck permit, or building permit from the building department. We had asked the zoning board for a variance to cover it.
Oh, wait a second. So they got a building permit to build a non-conforming deck? After they got the variance. Oh, after they got the variance? Yes.
But the deck is permitted use for 15 feet from the rear property line, so the deck is allowed there.
It's covering the deck that creates the broad room.
Right, 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 I get it. But the patio is already there. So you're, are you going, you're not, the way that looks, the deck isn't going any further back than the patio is?
No, we, no, the deck is not going past our patio line. We are wanting to put a roof.
The deck's not the problem.
I understand, but if she came in with, like John said, with, you know, expansion of non-conforming pre-existing use, she could put that roof on, because she would only be putting the roof over the top of the porch, right? If, if the, if the deck were there already.
Yeah, and we looked for expansion, if there, say that, that's why I asked the question, say there was cement there 30 years ago, you can expand that footprint up.
Right, right. So she wanted to put a roof, if they wanted to put a roof over top of the patio, they'd be fine.
Because you're not, by law, not increasing the setback.
But when's the, when was the deck there? When was the deck?
The deck is getting built.
Yeah, because it wasn't there, that was the issue. But they, but now it is, it's got a permit.
Right.
Right, but that's the point. You can build a deck, but if you put a roof on it, then you can't do it.
No, but it's even more ridiculous, if they came in, wanted to build a roof over the patio.
They could do that.
They could do that.
Yeah.
Right. And, but, you know, and their neighbor couldn't do a damn thing about it. But now, because they want to put the roof over top of the new deck, they can't. That, I just, honestly, I think we ought to just leave this one go.
Yes, I agree.
And would there be a difference, just for curiosity, if it was one of those like removable, you know, retractable kind?
That might even be less.
It could cover the whole thing.
They could cover the whole patio, and we couldn't do anything about it. Yeah, if we wanted to.
Good luck with your deck and roof.
What was the decision? Do you know where one of the decisions was?
Decision was closed.
Well, was it the?
20th or 21st.
So we're almost there, anyway.
So you don't need a motion, right?
Nope. Yeah, sounds like the objector wasn't there for good party status anyway, so...
And even if they were, I mean, if I were her, not giving the song dash legal advice, but if the zoning board ruled against her, I would just put a roof over the concrete. There'd be nothing we could do about it.
He said it, not me.
I only know that because I had a neighbor who actually did that, and they built their patio such that a portion of it was in the setback, so when he put the porch on, the porch actually had a tooth taken out of it, so they were able to comply with that setback.
Some people don't rip out their non-conforming cement slabs, just so they can go back to it if they have to, so.
Well, sure.
All right. Paul, do you have an update on Rolling Hills Park fees?
Well, the only thing I want to point out to you in your docket is estimates with regard to the construction of Rolling Hills Park. The total cost of that project, if we were to do all of the aspects of it, would be I can tell you there's not $7,450,000 sitting around, but having said that, and I really want to have a discussion with council as part of the budget, you know, if you go back and look at what we were doing when we were building the pool, the intention was to go out and borrow funds, which we did, and then knowing that there was a second bond issue that would be required to be able to make the pool possible. And so if you wanted to, the same logic still applies there, the same structure in terms of your, your debt service repayments over the next few years is the same. There's a dip that's coming in the next couple of years that will allow you to borrow funds without increasing substantially the amount of debt service. So we can have a discussion about this as part of the...
Budgeting.
Budgeting process, but I just wanted to get this into your hands. You know, one of the things that Mark did, and it's really in that second page, is Mark kind of took this and said, okay, if we divide this into the essentials, the road and utilities, what does that cost? And then what do each of the amenities cost? And it kind of gives you an idea of what those are. And, you know, the other thing is, while, while it makes sense to grade all of this in, it might make sense when we sit down, instead of building it all, is at least grading it in, and at least on one or two of the amenities, looking at the possibilities of getting assistance from the state of Pennsylvania. So, but we can make that part of the budget discussion.
Okay. Thank you for putting this on the radar. Next item, hospitalization renewal.
We met with Representative Ensco Long after we got off of the floor from their initial announcement that the, the health insurance premiums were going to go up by 44%. We had Ensco Long go back to UPMC to see whether or not there's anything else that could be done, and also to go out to check other markets to find out. UPMC is willing to extend the policy with a 15% increase. Highmark won't even quote our policy. The reason why this is going up this year is that we have three people who are covered under this policy who have very serious illnesses. And as a result of that, our experience last year was such that it warranted that, at least in UPMC's mind, that 44% increase. And it's the reason why Highmark will not quote it. The one thing that I would point out to you, and I tell you inside the manager's report, is that if, you know, we've been with UPMC for a considerable length of time. And over that length of time, if you look at what our increases are, there were many years when there were rate freezes. And so over, I guess it's the last, I think it was eight years, if you, if you look at it over that period of time, our annual increases are coming out to like 2.5, 6%, which is remarkable, quite honestly, for health insurance. And so it's going to be my recommendation that council authorize us to renew our policy with UPMC with that 15% increase.
So moved.
Is this just for one year? I mean, what, is to say the year after, there's another 15%? What is that look like?
I think we should like look elsewhere during the interim, just to get an idea.
Yeah, and the problem with, with pricing on health insurance, no carrier will give you a rate until your current carrier gives you a rate. And so this whole process, every year for us, starts early. It will occur in late July or August, that's the earliest we can get a quote from our current carrier. And once we have that in hand, we have in the past gone out and shopped, but I think right now is not the time to go out and shop.
So we do have a motion, a second, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Seven, nothing, Mr. Lowery. Any items for next agenda?
Nope, don't go there yet. Peters Township Sanitary Authority, Elizabeth Drive project. Mark's gonna handle that.
I don't remember that.
Do you happen to have that slide, Paul?
I don't have it.
I'll verbally explain it.
A council may, may not be aware, this, our sanitary authority, Peters Township Sanitary Authority is in the process of wrapping up a pretty major sanitary sewer replacement project on Marble, Elizabeth, and TP Drives, kind of in northern part of the township. As part of the project, we had sat down with them, or I had sat down with them last winter to kind of talk about impact to the roads and repaving effort and everything. And we paved Marble Drive about five years ago. Their sanitary sewer was right smack in the middle of the cartway, so that was a no-brainer. That was full width, mill and overlay. They're gonna do that. I'll call the back half of Elizabeth Drive. It hasn't been paved since year 2000, so it's 25 years old. We were planning on paving it next year anyways, so that was off the table. We told the sanitary authority, just prepare the ditch lines, bring binder to the surface, and we'll pave it next year as part of our, there's no reason to spend the money that we paved that part of the road. Where we're having an issue is, I'll call it, the top half of Elizabeth and a 400-foot section of TP that they disturbed. The plan was to, they were only going to disturb one lane with the sanitary sewer, which they've done, but it was deep, the road base was soft, and when hundreds of tri-axles brought material to the back part of the job, you had to drive over that part to get to Marble and the back part of Elizabeth, the roads got pretty beat up. So I walked the project with the sanitary authority a week and a half or so ago, and broke the news to them that, you know, we were going to require the full width of the roadway be paved, and that was not in our contract. So I've been talking to them, and I think what's fair, they've, they've got their contractor to hold their unit price, which is actually a very good unit price for paving. Those roads are also like 14 years old. They're coming due soon, so I think that the fair thing to do, it's a win-win for both of us to split the cost with the sanitary authority to pave the other half of those roads. Comes up to about $22,000 if we split it, it's $11,000 each. You know, I know we had that money in the budget, so that's what I'm gonna recommend.
You want to do it now?
We want to do it now.
I have no problem with that, that makes sense.
Yeah, I mean, the other alternative would be to remove it from their contract, and we pave it next year.
Yeah, but you don't know what the cost's gonna be now.
You don't know what the cost, and the neighborhood suffered. I mean, it's been a long slog for them over the neighborhood.
Plus, it might get worse, too.
So I'd rather pave it this fall under their contract and just split the cost.
Do you need a motion?
No.
Okay. That's what I think we should do, unless I go to disagree.
This Saturday, September 14th, 11 o'clock, we're gonna dedicate the pavilion to Tom and Sandy McMurray up at Rolling Hills Park. If any member of council can be there, that'd be great. And I know there's been discussion about next meeting and availability of people. We're opening the bids for the splash pad on the 17th. And if there ever was a meeting where it would be good to be able to have everyone present, it could be that meeting.
I'm not gonna be available, I'm telling you right now. So I'm not available on the next, that week.
Okay. So I guess the question is, what council wants to do? I mean, the, the alternative is, we could schedule a special meeting, because there's three weeks between meetings, too. And if we're gonna go ahead with this project, I don't think it's in our interest to wait a month to be able to award it.
Why don't we hold the workshop we were gonna hold on the 30th and the 23rd? How many people can be here on the 23rd?
I think everybody can make it. Not everybody, but Matt's there.
You two can, right? You two gotta...
I won't be here, there's three of us.
So you got, you got four if you want to do that.
You want to have the workshop on the 23rd with the four of us, and then just have the regular meeting on 30th? Just switch the two around?
The other option that was out there is have the meeting Tuesday, and I think that everyone but Frank could attend.
I can do that, we can do that, too.
Whatever council is comfortable with.
Just to be clear, the 24th?
Correct. I mean, I'm just...
Any of that, it's on, it's on the ballot all of this.
So you'll have six of us on the 23rd and...
Or the 24th.
24th, I'm sorry.
So we're gonna have the regular council meeting on the 24th, is that what you're saying?
I'm just giving, putting it out there as an option.
I mean, I'd like to be here when you do that. You want to vote no.
Well, I don't know. It's kind of odd. Then, then let's have the workshop on the 24th, and let's have the regular meeting on the 30th.
There was, are you available on the 30th? I got the impression you might not.
The 30th?
Yeah.
Right, I might not be able to. I don't know yet. Can we do this over email and get...
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm whatever you want to do it, so. At least at this point in time, things change.
Okay, so you, you cannot be here to Frank. You can't, you're not gonna be all the week the 23rd, right?
Right. I won't be back until 28.
But you desperately want to vote no on splash pad.
I don't know, no, I just want to see what the prices, I don't desperately want to say no. I voted for everything up to this point, because I thought it was a reasonable compromise to, you know, what we were gonna do. I don't anticipate the cost is gonna be a lot lower. You know, it's gonna be lower. But it's probably never gonna get cheaper, either. It's probably never gonna be any cheaper, either.
Well, it's gonna be a lot lower than the, the pool, there's no question about that.
Yeah, it will be, it would be cheaper than that.
I don't know when it's gonna come in.
I mean, my preference is, I'd rather spend the money in two phases, too.
So is everyone gonna be here on the 30th?
Be honest with it, but...
Right, let's do it on the 30th.
Okay, so we're gonna move the...
Monday, do it Tuesday.
No, no. We're gonna move the regular meeting to the 30th, a week later.
Yeah.
And...
The workshop's the 24th.
Yeah. So it's gonna take a motion of council to move the meeting.
So moved.
And if it's okay with you, can I get back to you as to whether the workshop's on the 24th, or whether we can squeeze it into October?
All right.
Okay, because I just don't know, I'm, I'm gonna be committing people.
You have to advertise this meeting.
Yeah. All right, okay.
Anybody second my motion?
We did, we did. Yes, we're all in favor.
I think we did.
Yeah, seven, nothing.
Okay.
Anything for next agenda? Motion is adjourned.